Meeting will come to order today is November the 14th, 2013. May we please stand, I'm sorry, 2023. Can we please stand for the flag salute and a moment of silence? And please remember the ones that we have lost and pray for their families.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
This is to advise those present at this November 14th, 2023 Regular Board Workshop Action Meeting of the Board of Education of the City of Pleasantville and the County of Atlantic. That notice was given on January the 6th, 2023 of the revised annual designation of the regular monthly board meetings as required by the provisions of Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975. Notice thereof has been distributed for publication in the press, posted in the administration building, and forwarded to the city clerk of the city of Pleasantville within time required by the said act.
Roll call Ms. White.
Ms. Alberto. Ms. Clemmons. Ms. Gray. Ms. King. Ms. Mello.
Here.
Ms. Sanchez. Mr. Sanchez. Okay. Ms. Morgan. Ms. Rowell.
Present. Are we good? Next, 1.5 public comments. Agenda items only, please. Can you come to the mic, say your name, and please be courteous? First, we have Mrs., is that Paramus, the PEA president?
Good evening, Madam President, Superintendent, Dr. Martinez, and all of our fellow board members in Rassstrom. My name, my name is Sarita Primus. I am the current PEA president. And again, I just want to thank you for this opportunity. The PA has had some concerns over the last several weeks of opening our school this year. We have met with the superintendent on two occasions, and our last meeting was on October the 18th. Several concerns were brought to the administration's attention, and some of those, those were some concerns from the outstanding administration, like things that happened prior to her being in office. Also, issues with concerns with CNI as well as policies that have been enacted without working together with the union. Currently on your agenda, there are about 12 different policies that are either being revisited or abolished and revised. And so those include two sick leave as well as two attendance policies that need to be discussed with the union and brought in for negotiations. As we stated before, we want transparency, we want to work with the administration, we want consistency, and we really need follow through. As you know, our union has gone through a lot over these last several months. The losing, the loss of our dear president Joe Manetta, and currently our vice president is in a hospital battling as well. She suffered a stroke yesterday. And so the stress level that our, our young, our staff and our colleagues are under is tremendous. And we need this board as well as everyone on the Rassstrom to work with us so that we can move forward as a district. So we're asking tonight that you look at those policies again and maybe table them so we can have a discussion with the union so that we can move forward properly. Again, these policies need to be discussed with us and going through because these things are in our contract and they need to be negotiated. So again, I thank you tonight for your time. And again, PEA wants to work with the administration. We need you all to work with us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mrs. Paramus, the superintendent, she will follow up with you guys, okay? Thank you. Next, Ms. Jean Hubby from the NJEA. Thank you, Mrs. Hubby. Next is Ms. Shirley. Ms. Shirley? Next, can't make out this name, is it David or from the PEA?
David Duffy.
Yes.
Good evening.
Hi, how are you?
Good. The staff members throughout the district are frustrated. Our schools are understaffed in all areas. We lack efficient staff to properly educate our students and maintain the well-being of our facilities. We need an HR department that is actively seeking to hire experienced and qualified teachers in a market that has become very competitive. We need to increase substitute pay beyond the new wage of $130 per day. For example, Atlantic City offers substitutes the opportunity to earn anywhere from $190 to $290 per day depending on the school. We need to increase our security guards, which is slightly represented on the agenda for tonight. We need to understand we have and are still overworking our custodial department. I have faith that we will make these improvements in time, but, but please understand the emotional and mental anguish that our staff members are enduring currently. We entrust you to recognize our needs as the school district and to ensure our students are being provided the best opportunity to learn in our schools. Finally, staff members at PHS, the high school, are concerned with there only being two tiers of discipline and specifically detention or suspension. Traditionally, the use of ISS, which is in-school suspension, or three to seven programs, were used to support our code of conduct policy. However, without these systems, we feel there's an increased disruption to our learning culture. We ask for your attention and support to resolve these matters in a timely manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, excuse me, hey, did you have a chance to talk with the superintendent in regards to your needs?
We've been meeting with the superintendent. I'm part of the committee, and we've been addressing some of our concerns, and some have been met and some have not. However, the focus of this was to share with the board members who represent the citizens and the students what our issues are, and that's only some of them.
Okay. Well, make another appointment and talk to her and see if you guys can resolve them, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Next, Mrs. Priscilla Noelle.
Bienvenidos todos. Good evening, everyone. I am having a look over of the agenda, and there are a few things that I'm concerned about. 3.17, the high school gym floor. In order for this to be in need of repair, the roof was not repaired and the leak compromised the gym floor. That was a hazard. I'm glad to see that it's going to be repaired, but then my concern is all the good work that will be done to repair the floor will be compromised if the roof is not being fixed as well at the same time and completed at the same time because we cannot control the weather. So we need to be rapidly repairing and proactively with good quality so that we can protect the investment that is being voted on tonight. 6.2, I see a lot of part-time security and the designation is district. When or where is there a time where there will be any full-time hires for security? And will there be any security permanently assigned to South Main Street School? Because today I witnessed South Main being understaffed, which is a safety issue, so much so that the educational staff had to step up to provide safety for the students. That's not their job description. They shouldn't have to do that. And I understand, Dr. Martinez, that you inherited a very heavy load, but as far as HR, as the previous speaker has said, we need to be more aggressive and have better incentives to attract talent to our district because we are in need of it so that we can service our children properly because that's what we all are here for. And I would appreciate that we look into that as far as the roof of the high school gym and the security issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Noelle. Next, can I get a motion to close public comments? Oh, no, I'm sorry. Next is the superintendent's report, excuse me.
Technology is only as good as when it works. Can you hear me? Yes? Can you hear me? A little bit louder, please. That is a song. All right. Good evening, everyone. Buenas noches. Good evening, board members, staff, and members of the audience and those that may be online with us. Thank you for joining us this evening. I am very happy to share with you the latest district updates. Throughout the weeks in September and October, there were celebrations for Hispanic Heritage Month in our schools. You'll see a picture of South Main Street and Washington Avenue schools in celebration. We also celebrated Red Ribbon Week, Be Kind to Your Mind, Live Drug-Free, where you'll see South Main Street and Washington Avenue and North Schools celebrating. You'll also see students at Washington Avenue and also Leeds School in celebration of kindness for others. Our district participated in the city's annual trunk or treat. Thank you to the staff in the curriculum and instruction department led by Dr. Hyman Medley, who did a wonderful job in executing this project and bringing us for the first time, that is right, a wonderful first prize trophy. Congratulations, Pleasantville. Public schools, we did it. Our students, our parents are participating in workshops to help them better understand what our students are learning in school. In our elementary schools, like at North Main, there was a math workshop for parents. At South Main Street School, parents learned about the importance of reading to children at a young age. Early childhood literacy is extremely important. One of our main priorities in our district is safety. In October, we launched our See Something, Say Something Annual District Safety Assembly, a campaign in which all students learned about prevention and reduction of physical assault and dangerous social media interaction that can result in catfishing. The assembly focused on providing students with strategies and resources to prevent assault and respond to crisis. The last See Something, Say Something assembly was held today at Main Street School, and there was a student assembly at Leeds. Actually, you'll see it there. In January, oh, today we did held our last See Something, Say Something student safety program. Although they weren't with us today, we also thank the members of the prosecutor's office that participated and helped with the success of this month-long initiative. We also thank our great partners, the Pleasantville Police Department. In January, at the middle school and high schools, we will continue with our student safety initiative with the topic and See Something, Say Something and human trafficking. I actually attended today at South Main Street, the, the assembly, and it was spectacular. Our kids are really learning about how to be present and how to pay attention to their surroundings and safety. So this is a great project. The Special Education Parent Advisory Group, known as CPAG, is a state-mandated distinct level, district-level parent-driven group charged with providing input to the local school district on system-level challenges and special and related services. We encourage our parents to join us and participate in our meetings. The next meeting is scheduled for December the 19th, and it is an opportunity for parents of students with disabilities to meet with me, the superintendent, because I want to listen to your ideas and concerns. Another wonderful initiative in our district is called Dreams. It is grounded by the Trauma Foundation Training Series with a background in six core strategies to help teachers in the classroom using the nurtured heart approach. It is to care and assist our students with their social and emotional needs. This initiative is being implemented in both our Pleasantville High School and middle school. The goals of Dreams is support and create health and healing for schools with trauma foundational training and staff, trauma-informed classroom resources and community resources, and nature, nurtured heart approach mentors in our schools. Mentoring is so important for not just our students, but for everyone. This initiative is a partnership with the New Jersey Department of Education, and it is free to our district. Our district is in partnership with the statewide parent advocacy network, which is committed to supporting children and families with needs due to disability or special health, mental health needs, poverty, discrimination based on race, ethnicity, gender, gender identity, sexual orientation, language, immigrant, or homeless status, involvement in the child welfare juvenile justice systems, there's so much more. SPAN offers individual assistance, workshops, and resources in English, Spanish, Creole, and all other languages as well. The district is providing SPAN meetings on specific topics from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. At Washington Avenue on January the 17th of 2024, the topic is health advocacy. At South Main Street in the school gym on February 21st, 2024, the topic is behavioral support. At Leeds Avenue in the school media center on March 27th, 2024, the topic is basic rights in special education. And at North Main Street in the school library on May 22nd, the topic is self-care and stress management. I'd like to thank the members of the Special Services Department led by Ms. Karen Farkas for all of their leadership in these initiatives. I'm really excited about this one. On the week of November 27th, our district will launch for the very first time a student survey for all of our students, that's right, all of them, to participate. The purpose of this survey is to identify areas of success and areas for improvement, prioritize school-wide student supports and allocate resources, to evaluate existing social-emotional learning programs and adjust accordingly, to strengthen our multi-tiered systems of support programs using using our data analysis, and to ensure equity across all student groups. This survey will feature nine factors that you see on the slide. We're going to survey students' feelings about school, which measures a student's sense of well-being, safety, and comfort in school; their perceived learning capability, which measures students' views of how positive and successful they feel in their specific capabilities as learners. We want to know their self-regard as a learner, which measures the impact of students' learning on their self-concept, their concept of self. We're also measuring for the preparedness for learning, which measures students' perceptions of their behavior and attitude in learning situations. We want to know about their attitudes to teachers, which measures students' perceptions of their relationships with teachers. We want to learn about their general work ethic, which measures students' attitudes and responses to work in general. We want to learn about their confidence in learning, which measures students' confidence in approaching and dealing with learning and perseverance when presented with challenging tasks and includes associated feelings such as high anxiety. We're interested in students' attitudes in attendance, so we're measuring their attitudes to attendance at school. And lastly, we want to know about students' response to curriculum demands. We want to know about students' perceptions of the appropriateness of the level of difficulty of work they are asked to complete. I want to thank the board, who previously approved us using Renaissance Fundamentals. It's a survey which will be given to students, all of them, three times a year during the fall, winter, and spring in an effort to learn about our students' perspectives and help us to meet one of our district goals. I'm happy to share that Pleasantville Public Schools was awarded, that's right, we got an award, the Community-Based Instruction Grant through the New Jersey Department of Education to restart the community-based instruction for students with disabilities. CBI, which is Community-Based Instruction, focuses on improving transitions across the educational lifespan and post-school outcomes for students with disabilities. It is an evidence-based practice that supports the successful transition from school to adult life and the full inclusion of students with disabilities in our community. We are now returning the Community-Based Instruction along with Structured Learning Experience Program to our high school after having been discontinued due to COVID. CBI will begin during the spring term of 2024 at our high school. And we are rekindling our partnerships with Stockton University, the City of Pleasantville Public Works, Tech Auto Service, Burger King, Popeyes, and our Ladies Center for Rehabilitation and Healthcare. We are really focusing on building partnerships. And so I'm very happy to share that I recently met with President Dr. Gaba and Dr. Katz, Senior Vice President of the Atlantic Cape Community College. Together, we shared opportunities for expanding our career tech education programs and expanding our early college program opportunities. I look forward to sharing with you, in the very near future, the programs that we aim to increase to expand our college career and workforce opportunities for our high school graduates. Our high school band and junior JR OTC were present and represented our district at the New Jersey Vietnam Veterans Memorial Wall Ceremony on October 22nd to honor veteran James Goslin of the Service Company, 2nd Battalion, 5th Marine Regiment, 1st Marine Division. He was killed in action on February 2nd, 1968. Mr. Goslin was from Pleasantville, here in New Jersey, not Pennsylvania. From the Leeds Avenue School, school language learning mild to mild, moderate class, to the members of the National Guard, 177, who are stationed in Saudi Arabia, our students, they made Veterans Day cards. And you'll see that picture there. And to all of our veterans, Pleasantville Public Schools salutes you and honors you this evening and throughout the month of November. Thank you for your service. And I also want to thank Mr. Dale Archie, our television production teacher from the Pleasantville Public High School, who did this amazing YouTube video. Hit it, Mr. Becker. Mr. Becker? Mr. Becker? Could you pause it, please? So that's just to whet your palate, because it's actually 18 minutes long. And our students did an amazing job with our staff to give messages to our veterans. So please, when you have a moment, please enjoy the YouTube. You can go online and find the YouTube. What's the title of it, Mr. Becker? Right, so Pleasantville Public Schools Veterans Day Tribute. I'm sure you're going to enjoy it. Thank you to the staff and to our students that participated. So thank you very much this evening for the superintendent's report. At this time, we are going to recognize some of our veterans. The following members are with us today, and we'd like to recognize them. Mr. Darren Babnew. And so this certificate reads, Pleasantville Public Schools, thank you for your service. Thank you for your 30 years of service to this country. Your bravery, sacrifice, and strength do not go unnoticed, and we will always be indebted to you and your family for all that you have given to the country. I would like to thank you very much for your service. Thank you for your time, bravery, and sacrifice for this country. Dr. Chapman, please join us. Thank you for your eight years of service. Dr. Lapel Chapman, thank you for your eight years of service to this country. Your bravery, sacrifice, and strength do not go unnoticed, and we will always be indebted to you and your family for all that you have given to the country. I would like to thank you very much for your service. Thank you for your time, bravery, and sacrifice for this country. Mr. Johnny Jones, thank you for your 18.5 years of service to this country. Your bravery, sacrifice, and strength do not go unnoticed, and we will always be indebted to you and your family for all that you have given to this country. I would like to thank you very much for your service. Thank you for your time, bravery, and sacrifice for this country. Thank you for your service, Mr. Irvin Maribel. Thank you for 11 years of service to this country. Your bravery, sacrifice, and strength do not go unnoticed, and we will always be indebted to you and your family for all that you have given to the country. I would like to thank you very much for your service. Thank you for your time, bravery, and sacrifice for this country. Here we go, Dr. Chapman. I knew you were in the room. And thank you for your service, Mr. Alex Rodriguez. Thank you for your three years of service to this country. Your bravery, sacrifice, and strength do not go unnoticed, and we will always be indebted to you and your family for all that you have given to the country. I would like to thank you for, very much for your service, your time, bravery, and sacrifice for this country. And these individuals were not able to join us, but I'd like to recognize them. So Prince Padieko, for six years of service to this country. Tamar LaShur Owens, thank you for your 10 years of service to this country. Sergeant First Class Timothy Mack, thank you for your 20 years of service to this country. Jeffrey Silver, thank you for your years of service to this country. And Eileen Harrigan, thank you for your 20 years of service to this country. So Jeffrey Silver is actually still active today. So let's give him another round of applause. That's right. I'm really excited to celebrate these individuals also. Vamos a celebrar estos estudiantes. These are Students of the Month. At the Washington Avenue School, one of the following students, please join me. Miguel Hidalgo Gomez. Catherine Palacios Noyola. Come on up. Do I have Miguel? That's, Mom, you can bring him up, that's fine. Tráilo. Catherine Palacios Noyola. Jocelyn Galan Mejía. That's right, we accept parents too. Joaquin Gerald. Aiden Brown. And Guadalupe Arizmendi Pérez. Hola. Catherine. Aguanta mi hija. You can stay right here. ¿Cómo te llamas? No se me vaya. Jocelyn. Wait, 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 wait. Vamos a tomar una foto con ella. Aquí. And you are? Joaquin Gerald. You're welcome, don't go away. Aiden? ¿Tú? ¿Cómo te llamas? Guadalupe. Y tú serás? Miguel. Okay. There you go. Not last. Aquí. Yo quiero una foto. Va allá y coge la foto. Ya se puede parar con él, no se preocupen. All right. All right. So let's give a big round of applause. The following Students of the Month at the Leeds Avenue School, please come join me. We have Students of the Month. And the certificate reads, "You are getting closer to your dreams each day. Keep up the hard work and you will get the best results. I wish you a great future because you deserve it." Isabella Maltines. Marjorie Pichaldo Medrano. Naya Christopher. Ronnie Mendoza Gutierrez. Julise Flenori. And Savannah Braithwaite. Joel, thank you. ¿Cómo te llamas? What's your name?
Isabella.
Let's give them a big round of applause. Congratulations. Thank you. Okay. Nice. You're gonna follow that way. And Students of the Month at North Main Street School. Amir Lamar Gresham. Come on, we can do better. Ashley Muñoz Mejía. Rainell Maltines. Aaron Jiménez Feliz. Itzel Suazo Estrada. Rashad Mohammed Gant. Those are your parents over there. Right. Here you go, Rashad. Come on. Here we go. Let's give them a big round of applause. Yes, we're very proud of you. Thank you. And for Students of the Month of South Main Street School, we have Tamia Munn. Benjamin Reese Spurges. We have Tamia Munn, Benjamin Reese Fuga, Raja Miller, Elid Moreno, Neftalid Desamor, and Keith Amoa. Congratulations to our young people. All right, we're gonna clap a little bit louder, parents. We are so proud of them. That's right. We are so proud of you. Thank you for everything you do. Keep up the good work. And you're gonna go that way. We want to recognize three Students of the Middle School. Abigail Joseph, Emily Romero Cuniez, and Sorio Hassan. Congratulations, Abigail. Keep up the good work. These students are not here. And finally, to our Pleasantville High School students. Angie Colte Sosa, Nadira Wyman, Sierra D. Hawkins, and Thomas Thompson. Hello, Angie. How are you? Congratulations. Stand right here. That's it, Angie. Sierra, and lastly. But not least. Sierra, right? No. Thomas. All right, to our great high school students. We are so proud of them. These are our future leaders. Thank you very much for being here. We're proud of you. Gracias. All right. And this concludes the superintendent's report. Thank you, board.
Hi, Ruby. How's Benji? Hey, thank you, thank you. How are you? Thank you, Benji. Thank you, Benji. Bye. You're welcome. Yeah, let's take one way, you little brother. Come on. Come on. Hands in the air.
Are we ready, board? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Martinez, for your superintendent's report. Next, 1.7. 1.7. The monthly fire and safety drill report. Can you just explain that, Dr. Martinez, what that is? So everyone can know what that is.
Sure. 1.7 are the regulated compliance school monthly fire and security drill that are conducted every month. And we've added them to the board agenda for the months of September and October.
Thank you so much. Next, can I get a motion for 2.1, board minutes? Motion by Mrs. Sanchez, second by Mrs. Clemmons. Any questions? We'll call Ms. White.
Ms. Alberto?
Yes.
Ms. Clemmons?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Sanchez?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan? Ms. Rowell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, Finance. Can I get a motion for 3.1 to 3.21?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Alberto, second by Mrs. Sanchez. Any questions? No questions? You okay, Ms. Gray? Oh, okay. I'll just back up. We are Finance. The Finance, 3.1 to 3.21. Okay, no questions? Okay. We'll call Ms. White.
Ms. Alberto?
Yes.
Ms. Clemmons?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Sanchez?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Rowell?
I'm gonna say yes to everything, but I'm abstaining from the charter school. And I also want to abstain from my name, Doris, for a while. I have a reimbursement in there for going to the New Jersey school boards. So I have to abstain from that. But yes to everything else.
Motion carries.
Next, Transportation. Can I get a motion for 4.1?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Sanchez. Any questions? No questions? We'll call Ms. White.
Ms. Alberto?
Yes.
Ms. Clemmons? Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Sanchez?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Rowell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, Facilities. May I have a motion for 5.1?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Alberto, second by Mrs. Morgan. Now, we also have an addendum to put in there as well. Okay, okay. No questions? Okay. We'll call Ms. White.
Ms. Alberto?
Yes.
Ms. Clemmons?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Sanchez?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Rowell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is, we have an addendum for our Facilities.
So I'll read 5.2, Facilities?
Yes.
Motion to approve the facilities usage for Ms. Janet Manning to use the middle school cafeteria on December the 15th, 2023, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. for approximately 80 persons attending. This event will be a celebration of the Pleasantville JV jokers, cheerleaders, and football players. The students will be provided with food, awards, and prizes at a cost of $528, utilizing funding source 11262-100-000-055, calls for security and custodial staff needed. We can add to that motion to approve Atlantic County All-Star Football Game to be held at the high school football field on November 25th of this year, rain date, November 26th, from 11:00 a.m. until 9:00 p.m. for levels of taxi, Pee-wee, JV, and varsity games for approximately 200 persons attending at a cost to the district at approximately $720.
I'm asking the board, can we, with this, since this is the children and they're the children of our community, if we can waive the fees for this?
Yes, I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion.
Is there any questions? We'll call Ms. White.
Ms. Alberto?
Yes.
Ms. Clemmons?
Yes.
Ms. Gray? Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Sanchez?
Abstain.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Rowell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, now, we need a motion to approve it. Because that was just a motion on the floor to waive the fees, but now we have to do a motion to approve the events.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Morgan, second by Mrs. Clemmons. Questions? No? We'll call Ms. White.
Ms. Alberto?
Yes.
Ms. Clemmons?
Yes.
Ms. Gray? Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Sanchez?
Abstain.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Rowell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is Human Resources. It's 6.1 to 6.8.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Sanchez, second by Mrs. Morgan. Are there any questions? No questions? We'll call Ms. White.
Ms. Alberto?
Yes.
Ms. Clemmons?
Yes.
Ms. Gray? Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Sanchez?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Rowell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is Policy. I just wanna have a slight, a little discussion with the board. We had a couple of the PEA reps come up to talk about the different policies. And we have to approve them. So, does anyone have any discussion about us approving these? Because I think they wanted more discussion.
I just have a question.
Me too.
I got legal. Can we legally approve these? Or is it something that they do have to go over further contracts?
I don't actually have the policies in front of me. However, if the board is seeking to amend a policy or in some instances to rescind the policy, revoke it, the language in the contracts would control. It's a policy. But if there's contractual language that enables employees or members of the bargaining unit to certain benefits, that's bargained for, that doesn't change. So, it's really up to the superintendent or whoever is negotiating to determine whether or not that's something that needs to be discussed with the PEA.
If the policy changed, that contract still stands?
Yes.
When it comes to that.
It's contractual.
I have a question. Is there any way that we can table this and talk about it in executive session? And then come back for it? Just in case there's more questions pertaining to it, get some clarity?
You can. We can discuss it.
Do you want to weigh in, Mrs. Martinez?
Actually, I'm going to defer to our...
The mics are so low, you can't even barely hear you talking.
Ms. White, would you assist? Because we actually did a first read on a policy.
Right. Like, the first reading for the sick leave, if the board... That's the first reading, if the board wants to table that one? Because that includes attendance, sick leave. And I believe that's what the union was concerned about. The... I'm sorry?
First reading?
On this section. Because there's three policy sections. There's one section that's the first reading. Then there's another section that's the second reading.
So what's your recommendation?
We can still discuss it in closed session, just from a legal point of view.
Okay. All right. So I would like to make a motion to table this so we can discuss it in executive session? Any second?
Second.
First, we have to take the motion in the floor.
Yeah. We had discussion.
If the other motion was moved, then it has to be...
Who made the motion?
You sent it, move there in the second before you could table it.
Yeah, because we had the discussion. You couldn't have a discussion without...
I didn't know it was moved in the second.
I don't think it was. I think never did, because she made a comment and just started talking.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
So you didn't even get a chance to...
Okay, so we'll make a...
Okay, so Ms. Morgan...
We'll call Mrs. White.
Ms. Morgan, you first and me second. And Mrs. Sanchez, second. This is just... Just the table, so we can go talk about it and then come back out.
Ms. Alberto?
Yes.
Ms. Clemmons?
Yes.
Ms. Gray? Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Mello? Ms. Sanchez?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Rowell?
Yes.
Motion carries to table policy.
Next, Curriculum and Instructions. May I have a motion for 8.1 to 8.4?
Second.
Okay. Who's first?
Sanchez, second.
First by Mrs. Sanchez, second by...
Morgan.
Mrs. Morgan. Any questions? Any questions? We'll call Ms. White.
Ms. Alberto?
Yes.
Ms. Clemmons?
Yes.
Ms. Gray? Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Sanchez?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Rowell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is 9.1. Next is nine point one, we're ready to go into executive session.
Um, did we defer to instruction?
Oh, we have to do the addendum for CNI.
Okay, we have an addendum, I'm sorry, for C. M., uh, I'm sorry, addendum for C. M. I, CNI, I'm sorry.
So there's an addendum for Curriculum and Instruction, eight point five. Motion to approve for Tamara L. Owens to attend the New Jersey Association of School Librarians Conference, December three to five, at the Hard Rock Casino in Atlantic City. The consortium design team ambassadors be facilitating two sessions on Monday, December the fourth, at a no cost to the district for Ms. Owens to attend. And the title of the sessions are in the addendum, on the addendum. Also is motion to approve our district students to participate in the city of Pleasantville's annual Winter Wonderland Art mural contest, uh, which will be held at the annual Winter Wonderland and tree lighting on December the first. And lastly, motion to approve the Maker and Creators Tour to be held at the Pleasantville Middle and High School on December twelfth and thirteenth, uh, and also to include field trip opportunities for students to travel to either Barrett Outdoor Living, Viking Yacht Club, or Epsican Mills.
Motion.
Second. Motion by Mrs. Sanchez, second by Mrs. Morgan. Any questions? No questions, we'll call Ms. White.
Ms. Alberto?
Yes.
Ms. Clemmons? Ms. Gray? Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Mello? Ms. Sanchez?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Rowell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is nine point one, we're going to enter into executive session.
It is hereby resolved that the Pleasantville Board of Education may go into closed or private session from which the public shall be excluded in accordance with the provisions as set forth in N. J. S. A. ten four dash twelve and ten four dash thirteen. The following subjects shall be discussed on this date in the session of the board, closed to the public. Personnel matters, pupil matters, pending and anticipated litigation. Be it further resolved that the discussion in closed session will be disclosed to the public at this time or a future meeting of the board when it is no longer necessary to maintain the confidential, the confidential nature of the items discussed.
Need a motion.
We'll call.
We need a motion.
Motion. Second.
Ms. Alberto?
We'll call Ms. White, I'm sorry.
Ms. Clemmons? Ms. Gray? Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Mello? Ms. Sanchez?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Rowell?
I'm sorry, yes.
Seven thirteen.
Second by Mrs. Sanchez.
By Miss Morgan?
First by Miss Morgan, second by Mrs. Sanchez. Do we need a vote call?
You can do all of them.
Okay. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Do we need to talk about what we talked about in the executive session? Okay.
We need to...
Can I get a motion to approve the HIB report?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Sanchez, second by Mrs. Alberto. Roll call, Ms. White.
Ms. Alberto?
Yes.
Ms. Clemmons? Ms. Gray? Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Sanchez?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Rowell?
Yes. Uh, no. Uh, 9.4 public comments. Oh, I'm sorry.
So you got the poll.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I get a motion to approve the policy?
Motion, second.
Motion by Mrs. Sanchez, second by Ms. Morgan. Any questions?
Second by who, Ms. Morgan?
Ms. Morgan.
Um, President, also on page 36 of the agenda, we need to add, um, those omitted count numbers...
You need to, uh...
Yeah.
Yeah, now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry. Right. On page 36, can we add the following to the student activities for items for Junior Achievement Account or Junior Achievement Day? It's on page 36 of 50 for Washington School, number 536, Student Activity Account, for Leeds, 0540, and for North Main, 539.
Thank you.
Let me do the roll call for the pop...
Roll call, yes, I'm sorry.
Ms. Alberto?
Yes.
Ms. Clemmons? Ms. Gray? Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Sanchez?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Rowell?
Yes. Next, public comments, 9.4... Okay, all right. Next settlement. Um, go ahead.
Yeah, this is a proposed settlement in the matter entitled Presley versus the Pleasantville Board of Education. That case is currently pending in the Atlantic County Superior Court under DACA number ATL-2794-22. The terms of the settlement will be available for review in the Business Administrator's Office for the public if necessary. And there's a settlement agreement that has already been approved and executed.
Now, did a motion?
Motion. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Sanchez, second by Mrs. Alberto. Questions? No questions? Roll call, Ms. White.
Ms. Alberto?
Yes.
Ms. Gray? Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Mello?
Yes.
Ms. Sanchez?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan? Ms. Rowell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, um, 4... No, I'm sorry. 9.4 public comments. Uh, Mrs. Priscilla Noel.
Good evening again. I was... Today I was driving up to the high school where the parking lot is near the weight room, and I was so excited 'cause I know that there were some renovations that were proposed. And then I was disappointed because it seemed like the weight room was only half done. As I've been aware, that the whole school got painted, but it seems as though they neglected to paint the weight room. And I'm just wondering if, you know, that can be done expeditiously because it helps build morale and spirit for the athletes who are working out in there. They shouldn't have a facility that's half-done. It's not fair to them. And I'm also disappointed that we didn't have more notification on the high school football playoff game to drum up more support. I think that students should be highlighted when they are competing and representing the school well, which segues into this Dreams Initiative, which I'm glad to see it, and in theory it should work. But we really need to put boots on the ground to do this trauma-informed care because there has been a lot of trauma in this district. Likability cannot be manufactured. So if you want to be liked, you have to put boots on the ground and show your effort. And even if you do your job well, that doesn't mean it guarantees you being liked, whether you're a board member, or superintendent, or teacher, or security guard. Does not guarantee you will be liked. So when we talk about trauma in this district, we need to... The people who come in to work, to get voted in, we need to understand that there's been trauma. There's been a revolving door of leadership. So we need to support the staff, support the students who had to face the brunt of this trauma that they've experienced because there's been inconsistency, instability, and uncertainty every year, year in, year out. And so when we do look at what we're giving them, we need to make sure that it is nurturing and that it is attentive to that trauma. You think about the staff who's been here for 10, 20, even five years. They have not had consistent leadership. So they need kindness. They need consideration. They need to be believed. When they say they need stuff, 'cause they've had boots on the ground, they stuck it through and through, just like the students who might have been at the elementary, then got to the middle school. So, and then went to the high school. Sometimes they get to the middle school, and they don't come to the high school because of all this trauma. So I want us to focus also on rehabilitating the culture of the middle school because I think that's where we lose a lot of our students that could be here at the high school and that could contribute meaningfully to our student body. They go to SIT, or because we have a high rental population of students, they can move. Their parents can get up and move. So how do we motivate them before the high school level so that they feel good? And I think we lose it because everybody's fractured off at the elementary, but when they get here, they don't know each other. So like with drama, or intermural, all those things that get the different schools to be familiar with each other, there should be a collaborative effort. And I hope going forward with the parent collaboration and all that, that we can be that community together so that we can heal from this trauma. And with your leadership, Dr. Martinez, I'm hoping that that happens so that we not have one plant, we have a garden.
Thank you. And I'm actually gonna reach out to meet with you if you welcome the opportunity so that we can... I'd like to listen more to your ideas.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Priscilla Noel.
Oh. The... Yes. Yes. So, some updates. The roof of the high school is completed. It is repaired.
Thank you.
And we do have a schedule to make sure that the weight room is equally as beautiful and painted. It's coming soon with some other surprises for the high school.
Okay. Next is board comments. We'll start with Ms. Sanchez. Ms. King?
Oh, good evening. I would just like to commend Dr. Martinez in her monthly reports. I find him very informational and pleasing. I'm glad to see that the children are being recognized for their efforts monthly. I think that's an excellent idea. And I also would like to commend you on meeting the goals that you set at our retreat. And I'm just hoping that the board will take time to, um, do its part in meeting its goals.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. King. Ms. Gray? Ms. Mello?
Yes. I would like to thank Dr. Martinez. She did an excellent, excellent job. Proud of that. This removal. So thank you.
I wanna say that too. You do excellent job. The best. Continue.
Thank you. Ms. Morgan?
President. First, I want to apologize for being late. I have a sick daughter that has to have open-heart surgery, so I had to drop her medications off to her so everyone could keep her in prayer. She is a recent Pleasantville High School graduate, Chantel Morgan. So that was my reason of being late, so I just wanted to apologize. I wasn't just late just to come late. I wanna... I did miss the presentation, but I did receive the packet with the presentation in it. And I want to commend Dr. Martinez. I feel as though she has been doing an excellent job. She has been striving to bring our district along, and I can't wait to see... It's not gonna even be an end result because her mind goes on and on when it comes to the students and the staff. So I'm proud to be along this journey with her.
Thank you, board.
You're welcome. First, I want to say to everyone, have a happy Thanksgiving. Don't eat too much. Also want to say congratulations to Mrs. King and Mrs. Mello and the other two board members. Um, I don't have too much to say. The board has spoke already about Dr. Martinez doing a great job. Just keep up the good work. Um, this is Mrs. Sanchez. She has one more meeting. We're gonna miss you. Thank you for the service that you've done. I know sometimes it has been a little bit... It was rough sometimes. It was a little bit nice sometimes, you know? Little bit of fussing, you know? But we thank you for serving, you and your brother, for serving on the board and taking your time out because it is voluntary work. You don't get paid for it. So we just, as the board, I'm sure the board echoes me. If not, you can say you don't. But thank you for your service and coming out. And we just want everyone, thank you guys in the district for coming out, um, you know, coming out to our meetings. And we are also proud of the staff here in the district. Um, 'cause we don't just want to praise Dr. Martinez because it takes everybody to make the school work. So we, the board, are proud of everyone in the district, and we want you to keep up the work. Don't give up. I know sometimes things get hard. You get frustrated. We may be short of help, but help is on the way. We don't know when. We don't know how. We don't know who. But we just want you, don't get discouraged. We want you guys to be encouraged. And we, the board, we stand by you. We want to do what's right. We will do what's right. We are doing what's right for the district.
I forgot to say this last thing. I want to, um, give a nice shout-out and congratulations for the Jokers team that's going to... It's the championship, right? So it, like they said, it starts from outside the community to get inside the school district, which they are school district children, and they are fighting, and they are winning. So I just wanted to get congratulations 'cause I've been out there and I've watched them, and they... I can't wait till they get to the high school and really get us where we need to be at. So I just wanted to say congratulations to the Jokers.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
All in favor? All in favor? Aye.
Yes.
Sanchez and Morgan? All in favor?
No, it wasn't Morgan, it was Ms. Gray, right?
Ms. Sanchez or Gray? Sanchez or Gray? I'm not sure.
Sanchez or Gray?